Please stand and join Councilwoman Paget in the pledge to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer, please.
Will you pray with me? God, we thank you for this day. I thank you for our community and our town and its residents. I thank you for the leadership, God, for giving of their time to serve. God, I know that there's so many decisions on the plate, and I know that we won't agree on everything, but please help us all to understand that everybody has the best interest of our community and its residents at heart. So, God, we pray for a spirit of unity, a spirit of peace, and a spirit of calm. It's in your son's precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Fields. Call to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of July 7th. Item number two, and we have public comments. And Mr. Murphy, I believe that you are on board for public comment. Please state your name and address, and then identify your public comment.
William Forrest Murphy, 3208 West Noble. I live out on the west side of town. There are two things I'd like to address. One is why haven't we got, this city gotten up to speed to having a kiosk where people can come pay their water bills or fines or fees to the city? And I know that the first thing we're going to hear is the cost of putting one in. But most of people work in families, single fathers, single mothers. It's hard for them to get up here. I run a business, and through my neglect this last pay period, we'd gotten out of the COVID. I neglected to get up here and pay my bill. I do not use checks myself. I use a credit card or a debit card to pay my bill, always. It's the first time, and that was on me. That needs to be addressed. We need to get up to the millennium, get up to speed here, help make our community go just a little bit better, a little bit for the families that live here. And the next thing is, how many more children or how many more people are going to get hurt or die out there on Noble and Academy? This is where we turn to go to our hospital. We've got sports complexes north and south of that intersection. And I've heard, because I've talked to Don Channel a lot about it, and it says, well, it's the state's control. I've talked to Representative Mize and Senator Hall, and it all goes back to the state DOT. It's about time we started doing something about it, because they're ignoring it. There's not a stoplight between 74 and downtown Guthrie, period. It's a racetrack. Always has been. Out there where my shop is, when the oil field was running strong, it was really hard to get out onto that highway, because they just ripped through there. It's constant. I've got, they put those speed warning lights out there. They go off all the time. Everybody goes by them. They're flashing. And this is something that I think that everybody needs to step up and start calling and getting something done about, because as I said, there's not a light between there and there. And we've gotten a light put up at Pine and Noble. Traffic accidents and death. And I remember when Walmart put the first store in out here, that we'd never got a light out there till somebody died. Enough. This needs to be fixed. I don't have any children that live here anymore. It's just me. But I hear every day out there the ambulance, and I've seen, there's been, between Broadway and Academy, there's been three children dying in the last year. Three. Three. Let that sink in. Are we going to all start going to their funerals? It's ridiculous. It needs to be addressed. It makes it hard on our fire department if they've got to turn an ambulance in there and the traffic up there is piling up. We put a grocery store in out there. Great. It shows signs that we're moving up in this world. But it also puts added people slowing down and turning. And to challenge any of you to go out there at 5:00, between 5:00 and 7:00 any day heading west, and tell me you can't see what's coming at you. You can't. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate your comments and input. Is there anybody else that had anything for public comments or announcements? I hope I didn't miss any. I don't believe so.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Third item on our agenda is Consent Agenda Item A, which is the approval of the Public Works Authority Meeting of June 16th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chase.
Aye.
Chase.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Mayor Gentling, aye, unanimous approval of the Consent Agenda Item A, which is the Public Works Authority Meeting of June 16th. Item number four, Discussion and Possible Action to Award C-MOM Bid Number 2020-06 to Urban Contractors for Sewer Main Replacement Pine to Locust. Leroy, are you taking it?
Tenny will make the presentation on this, and then when he gets through, I've got some comments that tie into our workshop next week, two weeks from now.
All right, Tenny?
Public notice was published June 10th and 17th, 2020, to solicit bids for bid number 202006 sanitary sewer main replacements from Pine to Locust between Perkins and Grant. Sealed bids were received and read out loud on July 1st, 2020. There was four bids received. Urban Contractors LLC was the lowest bid. Myers Engineering has reviewed the bids and recommended awarding the bid to Urban Contractor LLC. The sewer line replacement project will be funded through our C-MOM program. Total expense for the project, including the engineering fees, will be $103,001,99.
Any questions of Tenny?
Where's the Locust?
It's just east of Pine.
East of Pine, okay. That's all I needed. My only question, Tenny.
All right. Well, thank you. I'll entertain a motion then, to approve C-MOM Bid Number 2020-6.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Councilman Channel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Mayor Gentling, yes. Unanimous approval then to award C-MOM Bid Number 2020-06 to Urban Contractors. With that, ladies and gentlemen.
Wait a minute. Hold on. I asked to make some comments.
Oh. With that, I'm going to introduce our city manager to make comments.
Thank you. In two weeks, on the 24th, we'll be having a workshop at 6:00 on the wastewater treatment plant to talk about the design of the plant, the budget, and the financing. As part of the financing, I just want to make the point while we're on the C-MOM funds, the C-MOM fee of $8 on utility bills was set up to make improvements to our sanitary sewer collection system. And in 2015, there was a bond issue done through the Public Works Authority with the Oklahoma Water Resources Board to finance 33,000 feet of sewer lines. And we roughly pay between $70,000 to $85,000 each year on that note. The money that is in excess of that, we use for these projects. As part of the financing plan, our financial advisor is presented to fund the sewer plant is that in 2032, when that note is paid off, 100% of these dollars would then go towards helping pay for the wastewater treatment plant. If we use that money in that, there'll be a period of years from 2032, depending on whether we do a 30-year note or 40-year note on the wastewater treatment plant, the money to make incremental improvements in our sewer collection system, that funding would not be available. And I just want to point that out as a good example, so that when we talk about it two weeks from now, when we talk about the C-MOM funding as a portion of the money to pay for the wastewater treatment plant, you'll understand what we're talking about. Thanks.
Okay. Good. Anybody have any questions of Leroy on that? Okay. Now, I will adjourn our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting. And call to order, our City Council Meeting of July 7th. Item number two on our agenda is Consent Agenda Items A and B. A is the approval of our City Council Meeting of June 16th. And B is the approval of acceptance of a reimbursable 100% grant by Homeland Security for a little over $15,000 to purchase radios for the fire department. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote. Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Yes.
Mayor Gentling, yes. Unanimous approval then of those two Consent Agenda Items. Item number three, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2020-6, approving the June 28th, 2018 weighted voted amendment agreement to the 911 Association of Central Oklahoma Governments. Leroy?
We've already passed that. I'm waiting for the next one. We passed that resolution as part of the important document, correct?
I don't think so.
Which one are we on?
We're on 911.
The 911.
This is the ACOG 911.
Well, you had asked us to put it on the agenda.
Okay. All right. I can speak to this. I think most of you know, maybe all of you know, the Association of Central Governments of Oklahoma, ACOG, which represents, oh, I think about, I think 30, no, 40-some cities in a five-county area. And they're responsible for upgrading our 911 communication system, emergency call system for fire department, sheriff, police, and so forth. And they passed, all of the voting by their bylaws was by weighted voting. And the weighted voting initially was by the number of landlines that people had. Well, of course, landlines are passe with everybody except the Gentling household, which we still have one. But anyway, most people don't. So in 2018, the bylaws were changed and voted on by ACOG to go on a population-based weighted vote instead of the number of landlines. And that was unanimously approved. The bylaws were changed. It was signed off by the Attorney General. And in looking, reviewing the bylaws this past year, it was determined that it never went to the 40-some entities, communities, and the counties to have their city councils also approve this. So we're kind of backing up, or asking each of the city councils to vote to change the weighted voting to be from landline, for the 911, to be from landline to population base. In Guthrie, our weighted, there are 339 total votes amongst all those entities, and our weighted vote is five when we do it by population. So moved.
Agreed.
Have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote. Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Yes.
And, did anybody call you?
No, you did not.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Mayor Gentling, yes. Unanimous approval then to approve Action Resolution Number 2020-6, which is approving the new weighted voting amendment for ACOG. Item number four is already been approved in our workshop. That was the resolution to submit, to authorize submission of a water conservation grant for Phase 1 of the softball-baseball complex. Item number five, Discussion and Possible Action to Adopt and Approve Ordinance Number 3333, amending the City of Guthrie Code of Ordinance, Chapter 4, and so on and so forth. Leroy?
Ordinance Number 3333 was recommended by the Planning Commission in its original version that came to the city council. When the city council reviewed that draft of the ordinance, there was some questions and thoughts that there was some fine tuning that needed to be done. And there was a committee of three council members that were assigned to review the ordinance and come up with recommendations. That committee put in a number of ours and worked very diligently to make what they thought were good recommendations that would benefit the community. But their recommendations to the changes to Ordinance Number 3333, it is now significantly different than the version that went through the Planning Commission. And there are some clerical items that probably need to be addressed as well. I am going to recommend, because this draft is significantly different from the version that went through the Planning Commission, that the city council send this ordinance back to the Planning Commission to get their feedback on the changes before we take action on it as the governing body. Now, that's not to preclude, if you make that motion, individuals here to speak on it could still speak on it if they want to, but I think there may be a lot of them that would rather, that would wait until it's been back and make their comments to the Planning Commission. But that's the recommendation that I would make as city manager.
I'd like to make that motion, that we send it back to the Planning Commission. But go ahead and discuss it, Brian.
Let's see if there's any.
I don't know that we're done yet.
Any question?
I just wanted to address the fact that there are, I think there's one street near the egg, which would be the one on the west side, that isn't included in part of what that committee discussed and have requested of me and probably other commissioners as well, that that street be included with the rest of them on Park Place to exclude buildings, metal buildings. And I wanted to draw that to everyone's attention. We have several names here, I guess, that live in that area that absolutely do not want them.
Well, there's a couple areas like that, too. The Moppenburg area is kind of like that, too.
They've got lots of buildings.
Okay.
I think there are a couple of people, though, that came specifically to ask if that could be amended, and that should probably be a part of the record.
Okay. All right.
So, with all due respect to planning, Joe, you were in the meetings. But with all due respect to planning, I mean, we've got about nine hours and three days in this. Okay, and so I'm going to recommend that Dan gets up and goes through this thing line by line, only because my time's extremely valuable, so is his, and so is hers. And we've got a ton in it. And to just push the, planning could have come in here all along. Joe wasn't there. That's just the fact. Nothing different happened on anything that you weren't in on. And so. Do what?
I didn't attend the third meeting.
Well, except the third meeting. That was just, that was just iron-up stuff, really. So.
Here's my beef. We knew this before Friday. We knew this before this damn agenda went out. So why the hell did it make it to the agenda? I don't know who's in charge of that, but Dan is, his time is valuable, and he's put a lot of time into this. All three of us on the meeting, we put some time in. I don't care if it's changed and amended. I really don't. But what pisses me off is that we come to this meeting.
Let's clean it up a little.
What ticks me off is that we come to this meeting with an agenda item that we know shouldn't even been on there in the first place.
If that's the case. My concern is, you were in the meetings, and why the rest of planning wasn't is beyond me. Okay, at this point. So, I mean, you can shake your head on it, but you were in the meetings. After, I think that first I want Dan to go through this line by line, and then I think that you respond to whatever you have issues with. I mean, this is what we had to do, so let's sit here and do it tonight. The way I look at it, my nights were consumed till 9:00 sometimes on this deal.
I understand that.
Starting at 5:00.
And there was a lot, I mean, the three of you have spent obviously considerable amount of time and energy in this.
So, therefore, and especially since you were in the meetings, two of them, and you were invited in the last one as well, Joe.
I was never invited to the first one.
I don't, there you go. That furthers my point.
I didn't come to the third one.
But you were asked to when we left the second one. Yes, I asked you.
I left the meeting early. You guys were still talking and I said, so you left.
Okay.
Well, I guess it's.
Whatever. I mean, there's going to be a complaint about, no matter what. Here's what's going to happen with this, okay? You've got 100% of the people, you're going to have 50% are going to like it, and 50% are not going to like it. So, Dan, if you would get up and go through the thing line by line, that's what I want as a councilman, and invest in my time in this.
Okay. If we expect the Planning Commission to be staff and make recommendations to us, how do they do that in this process?
But Planning Commission, and here, by the way, okay? When we on the first meeting, you didn't even know that this came to us, because I asked you, and you sat there, and Planning approved this thing, and you had no clue it even came through. You said that to me, right at that table, Joe.
I didn't see believing.
Yeah, you didn't have any idea about it, but yet you guys are approving it.
I'm not understanding why that's germane.
That is very germane.
Okay.
Okay, that's germane, because Planning already had it, but yet part of Planning didn't even know it was going through. On the original one that you tried to get a motion on. Yeah, that one.
That came here to the council.
That one that was here, exactly.
But now there's a number of changes.
Now, and now all of a sudden Planning's involved. Okay, but apparently they weren't all involved on the first one. But yet approved it.
Well, no.
So there you go.
I believe, I believe when it came to us, it said that the Planning, it was a 5 to 0 unanimous approval.
Exactly.
That's what it said. I don't know who the 5 are, but, okay? But now we've got significant changes.
There were significant changes before.
So.
There are significant changes to the significant changes.
So why not send it back to them?
Because they've had it. I think that Dan.
They've not had this, though, Brian.
Have you read this?
Three times.
Okay. So what are your issues with it?
Well, I got.
Why don't we go through that one by one?
I got a few notes on pages.
So let's go. Put your time in, Steve. We're not just going to kick this back.
I think that's what, I think that's what Planning deserves.
Really? Planning voted 5 to 0 on it, and part of Planning didn't even know it went through. So what do you mean, that's what they deserve?
I think they deserve to have input into a document that we should be voting on. Quit screaming on that.
I'm not. I don't know what happened on that. It's talking to me.
So just put your mask back on.
Okay, Joe, I appreciate you and all the things that you do, okay? But the bottom line is, we spent a ton of time in here. All of Planning could have been in that meeting. Okay, three different times over the course of three weeks, two and a half weeks. Okay, eight, nine hours. Okay, everybody could have been in there. There was nobody barred from that. That was not a private meeting.
But Brian, at the same time, I realize that you volunteered a lot of time, and Cheryl has, and so has James, and I don't want to negate that.
Have you read the ordinance, Jim?
I don't want to, let me talk. I don't want to negate that, but at the same time, they put in a lot of volunteer time, too.
Have you read the ordinance?
The difference, the only difference is a dollar, I suppose.
Right, exactly. Have you read the ordinance is my question.
But we're still putting in a lot of time. Yes, I've read it, but that's beside the point. That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
We set these people, we set Planning up, I'm pointing to you, Joe, I'm not trying to point at you, I'm trying to point at Planning. We set Planning up to look this stuff over for us before it comes to us. And they've put a lot of time in it, too.
Oh, really? Why don't you ask, why don't you find out how much time's been put in?
Well, Joe, how long have you been on Planning Commission?
No, I'm not talking about how long he's been on Planning. How much time has been put in this?
They're volunteering their time, too.
You told me when we first started, you didn't read this, so now all of a sudden you did.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a little confused here.
I would like to motion to table it. But also, I would like to make a comment that, could we please stop sending things onto the agenda that aren't ready?
Exactly. It's ridiculous.
Let's just quit. So, a motion to table it.
To table.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No. Roll call vote. Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Mayor Gentling, yes. Unanimous approval to table. Those people that were here to talk about giving their input, obviously it'll be on a future agenda. And some of these changes, some of these things may change, may not. But if you want to come and make comments now, you certainly can. I would suggest that you wait and see what the next addition is before you do that. It's up to you, however you want to do it.
If I understand.
Make a comment.
Just a minute.
Can I clarify real quick?
We just tabled it. It's not changing.
Is it tabled to, is it Leroy's recommendation to send back the Planning Commission?
James made the motion.
Well, tabling our vote, you're going to send it back to Planning Commission so that they can review it.
We have people here that have signed in. Should we not know what their concerns are before we go back to Planning and let it start over again? We may not have.
Cheryl, they probably should show up to the Planning Commission meeting. That's probably what they should do, to be honest. I mean, that's where it's going to be reviewed and discussed.
I just want to make sure that their input or their concerns are addressed before something is finalized again without that knowledge.
I think they can have either option. So if you are here, and you want to make a comment to what's being proposed here, you can go ahead. Obviously, the Planning Commission meeting is also open meeting, and you can have your input at that juncture also.
When is the planning meeting?
Next planning meeting. Dan?
I think it's this Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, yeah.
You're the chair, are you in the chair, Joe?
However, is it on the agenda?
Their agenda already been posted?
I'm sure it has.
Second Thursday in August will be the next.
I'll try to get it on that agenda. I'll need your firm.
In August or July?
It can't be on the agenda if it's this Thursday. Well, to send it back to the Planning Commission, since their agenda has already been made, it's going to be their August agenda.
13th.
13th of August. You can make your comments right here, okay?
I live on 58th on a dead-end road. It's a private road.
You want to come up here and identify yourself, address, and make your comments officially?
Sure.
Thanks, Brett.
My name's Brad Butler. Live at 6030 Southwest 21st. It's a dead-end, private road. Smallest lot out there is two and a half acres. The largest one's 100. I'm not allowed to have a 30-by-40 shop because I chose land over the big house. That's ridiculous. I don't live in Guthrie city limits proper. I'm out in the sticks. I don't know, 15 years ago, I think it was, you all annexed us so that we could help pay for the water treatment plant. This we don't even use. We don't see anything for this. All I want is a damn shop. And you guys are dragging your feet. Why?
Just trying to get it right for as many people as we can.
So those that live in the city on a podium. So those that live in the city on a poaches stamp can have a building, which several have, because I've driven around and looked at this, but I'm on Five Acres with a small, small house, 1,200-square-foot house. I'm not allowed to have a building?
How big a building?
Thirty by 40, it's 1,200 square feet.
So it's as big as his house.
Why don't you come back on this, because I think you're going to have some council people fighting for you on the deal.
Because that's ridiculous. I can't, you know, my hobby is to rebuild cars and motorcycles. I can't do that in a 500-square-foot shop. That's a shed. I can't even put my lawn tractor and lawn equipment in that damn thing.
But the calculations as proposed wouldn't allow you to do that.
No.
I hear you.
Okay, now, I've got people down that road that their barn was taken out during last August tornado, they're not allowed to rebuild it right now. They've got livestock out wandering around, all of his farm equipment's out.
Okay.
So you all dragging your feet to appease the people that live in the city limits is causing us problems out in the country. We don't see you guys, we don't hear from you, we don't see police, we don't see fire, we don't see anybody out there, but you're tying our hands.
I understand the concern.
I don't think y'all really do.
What you ought to do is ask for a list of the buildings that have been permitted in the last 18 months, and then go look at them. You want to get right down to the brass tacks.
And how is that my responsibility?
It's not your responsibility, that helps your case. It helps your case, I'm for you, man. It helps your case, 100%.
I mean, all you got to do is get off your ass and drive around the areas out there, and you can see all the people that have buildings out there. On smaller lots with larger homes.
That have been permitted.
That are up, yeah. Nobody said anything about it.
Okay.
And I'm, now I'm waiting and waiting, and meantime, prices of steel and labor is going up.
They've been inspected and permitted.
Well, I don't know about the inspection part of it.
I do, okay? Hence is what a big part of the problem is.
See, y'all are delaying everything. I can't repair the existing barn that was damaged by the tornado, because it's not worth repairing. So in the meantime, I've got a $15,000 motorcycle sitting unprotected, I've got all my lawn equipment sitting unprotected, and a truck I can't put undercover because you guys are dragging your damn feet. Who's going to pay for the damage in the next hailstorm? Should I sue the city? Should I sue to be de-annexed out in that area? Is that a viable plan? Is that an option?
I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, because you'd lose your tax money. So give me something for what I'm paying. I don't use a water treatment plant, I'm on a well and septic. I don't have fire protection out there, closest water is going to be the lake. Fire Department's on the tuba years ago, it's just going to be a controlled burn. I accepted that, and I lived out there. I also have had it. I should be able to have a shop, I should be able to have a horse, but I'm not allowed You make no sense.
But it's not inside the city?
Well, let's just be real clear.
I am just inside the city limits. My property line on the far side is the end of city limits, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brule.
Butler.
Can't read your writing, I'm sorry. Anybody else want to make some comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second to table, send back to the Planning Commission, and roll call, vote. Councilman Bothroyd?
Nay.
Councilman Channel?
Yes.
Councilman Paget?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Getling, yes, by six to one vote, it is moved back to the Planning Commission for their comments, and to then send back to the city council.
I hope Dan's visiting with him about it. Is there a variance or something that can be granted? I mean, that man had more valid points in his five minutes than we've had in the last whole meeting.
No, the variance is you just do it, and then you go to City Hall and get a permit when the concrete and electrical's being done. That's what the variance is. Ask for forgiveness. It's what it's been, okay? And it's ridiculous. What we put together covers the man, and that's a fact. If you read it, doesn't cover the neighborhood that you live in, okay? It covers that man what it covers. But if we read it, you'd see that.
Okay, item number six is comments from members of the city council. Councilman Long?
I don't have any comments.
Councilman Taylor?
Yes, just wanted to say thank you to the, what you guys did. I know it's a long, it's a pain in the rear, I understand that, but sending it back probably will get it straightened out. Hopefully, this doesn't last for another 30 days. I understand his, because he's not, he's right. It's just dragging us along, but other than that, thank you, staff, appreciate all y'all's hard work, and hopefully, we'll get this COVID mess out of the way before long, too. That's it.
Councilman Bothroyd?
I got nothing.
Councilman Channel?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Paget?
I'm good.
Vice Mayor Case? I do, I have some comments. We've got a number of vacancies on boards and commissions. At least six of our boards and commissions have vacancies, and I would ask that you go to the city website, City of Guthrie website, it has a listing of those and what the requirements are, but we'd certainly like to have more citizens engage directly in their, in their community via these boards and commissions. Second, I'd like to welcome the National Little Britches Rodeo. They're out at Lazy E this week. They have a great program, and they bring an awful lot of people to Guthrie, and so I'd like to welcome them to our, our community. Like to also congratulate Guthrie. According to Travel Pulse, which is a, a electronic travel agency, if you will, they identified Guthrie as one of the top 50 most charming small towns in America this week. So congratulations to, to all of you in Guthrie. And then a special thanks to Joe Chapel, who's outside the council chambers right now. But if you notice, that there are flags now flying on Division and Noble again, and Joe Chapel and Neighborhood Solutions are responsible for putting those, buying new flags in some instances, and then putting them up, replacing them, and putting them up on, on our streets on Noble and on Division. And Joe, I want to thank you so much for you, and I know others that were involved financially as well as a lot of time in putting those up for the Fourth of July, and now that they're up there for good. And if any of you are, any of you out there in the watching land of Guthrie here want to get involved, get a hold of Joe Chapel. He's got a good project there to continue to replace flags and put them up on special occasions. So again, thank you, Joe, for that, for that effort. Really, really appreciate that. Also, thanks to an anonymous donor. You know, COVID-19 has hit all of us, some harder than others, and some people have lost their jobs permanently or temporarily. It's caused people to reevaluate their priorities of what they can pay and can't, and sometimes utility bills, our water and sewer and garbage, sometimes get down towards the latter end of that. The city has initiated a payment plan to make that happen, and to work with citizens to try to help them out. But we had an anonymous donor that came forward and paid a substantial amount of money to cover unpaid balances. And I don't know who that person is, but I want to publicly thank that person, and if, if some, some of the rest of us have an inkling of donating to a good cause, here's another idea. Come to the city and give a check to the, to the ladies at the utility desk there, and just consider paying an unpaid balance of somebody who just can't afford it right now. Be a good thing to do. So anonymous donor, thank you. Lastly, our, our positive COVID-19 virus report, 43, the last I saw, 43 here in Guthrie, 28 have recovered, and fortunately, still, still zero deaths. I want to talk about this right here. There is no scientific or medical group that is not saying that this is an effective mechanism to minimize the spread of the virus, not a single one. Every single scientific and medical authority is saying this is a good protective thing for our community. I know we haven't, we initially mandated it, we, we now are highly recommending it as a council, but this is a courtesy, albeit, I think, a responsibility that we have to protect each other. You know, most of the scientific evidence is saying it doesn't really protect the person that's wearing it so much as it protects others. This is our responsibility to each other, folks. Put the mask on. Yes, it's a slight inconvenience. Put the mask on, protect those around you. It's just our responsibility. It's, it's, in my mind, it's just like, it's the, it's the smoking and the second-hand smoke thing all over again. It's, we have got to do this to protect each other. The virus isn't going away. It isn't going away. We need to be wearing this when we're out in public and we think that our social distance is going to be compromised. Put it on, wear it as something that you are doing for your neighbors, for your community, for others. It's our responsibility. Please do it, folks, please do it. With that, we're city councils adjourn.